This is the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I see that we have a quorum. If you'd all like to take a moment and silence your cellphones, and then join me in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, merciful, eternal and eternal.
Full roll call?
I think we got a call.
Yeah, I announced that. So we'll start with a call to the public. This is a business meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The town values and welcomes input. Please address the commission as a whole, not as individual commission members. Do not address staff members or members of the audience. Commission action on items brought up on call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The commission may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. And we have one person who's requested to speak, Rob Ingles.
Was it for agenda?
Oh, was this for D two, D three? Apologies. Okay, we don't have anyone. Does anyone want to speak? Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. C one and C two. C one is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on September 11th, 2025. And C two is to consider approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission work session held on October 23rd, 2025. Beginning with C one, do we have any discussion related to the minutes? Any questions or changes on C two regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission work session discussion? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2025, and October 23rd, 2025 minutes as read.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Moving on to new business. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item. After the subject has been announced by the chairman and explained by the staff, any citizen who wishes to speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after a commission discussion. Questions from the commission members, however, may be directed to a staff member or a member of the public through the chairman at any time. D one is discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a planning and zoning chair and vice chair for 2025 and 2026. Director Lloyd?
Sir, thank you, Commissioner Wesley. As you guys are aware, we had a couple resignations. Unfortunately, it was both our chairman, Jack Pence, and our vice chairman, Timothy Kinslick, have resigned. And so, kind of in a bind here, I'm glad that everyone's here. We have a quorum, we can move forward, but the ask is that look amongst yourself at who's ready, who's willing and able to stand up and be the next chairman and vice chairman per 17116.040. So it's in your hands.
I'd like to propose that Rick Miller step into the position of chairman, given his experience and in this arena, maybe not up on the dais at this point, but I think he would really serve the town quite well. I would entertain a motion, or I'd make a motion. Would you second?
No, I will. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would volunteer to be chairman as well.
Okay. Any other discussion at this point? Okay, I move to appoint Rick Miller as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do you want to have a? Two candidates, do we need to have a vote?
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
We have two people that have.
Right, so there should be some discussion amongst the commission.
Anybody else want to comment on his offer?
Okay, I move to appoint Rick Miller as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. That carries.
You need to oppose.
Sorry?
Opposed.
Opposed? Oh, one opposed. Okay, okay. That carries. Forgive me, this is my first time running this stuff. So, all right, well, that carries with four to one. The, moving forward, we need to select a vice chairman of the same. I would, if the commission agrees, I would be happy to serve unless someone else would prefer.
I too would volunteer to be vice chairman.
Mr. Chair, given your senior, kind of seniority on the commission, I would also recommend that you serve as a vice chairman on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That'd be my recommendation as well.
I would entertain a motion, or is there further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
My motion, we make DJ vice chair.
And second?
Second it.
Okay, all, and, yeah, all in favor? All right, and, okay, that carries. Opposed? And showing none, I see, we, it's accepted unanimously. At this point, I should yield the chair to Chairman Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the people that are in attendance tonight. It's really important that we have engagement from our community members in the planning and zoning process. We're all volunteers up here. You know, we have a lot, a lot of good things to consider as we act as Planning and Zoning Commission members that are important to the future of the community. We're going to go ahead and continue with our agenda. We do want to have decorum. It's important that we maintain decorum in this meeting. If you have, if you'd like to get up and speak, please address your questions to me. If you want to address one of the commission members, just ask me and we'll have them respond for you. We appreciate your being here this evening, and we'll go ahead and go to item D two on our agenda, which is a discussion of possible action regarding House Bill 2247 and amending the town code Title 16 subdivisions. Community Development Director Lloyd.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. This item, as indicated in the CDR, is in regards to legislation, the House Bill 2247. And the first time I saw the reading of this, it said, "We may do these things." And then, much to my surprise, I recently saw that they changed, they struck the "may" and they changed that to "shall." So we pretty much have to do this in order to comply with state statute. What it entails is probably not necessarily the best avenue to handle this. I think that there's something, some other things working in the background, but we're not here to discuss that tonight. But what we need to do is consider amending our code to meet statutory requirements for House Bill 2244, or 2247. And there's actually, in the ARS statute, also requires us to still have public hearings if, in the event that it is deemed a historical area or area of historical significance, then the process that we already follow would still be valid. So there's that, and basically looking at it, the perspective is that no, no public hearings would be held for sub, anybody that came to the town with a subdivision, a new subdivision, or even on a smaller level, if it was a change to a commercial structure for a site plan. So both, this item specifically is just for the first, and it entails rewriting the entire subdivision code and other sections to eliminate public comment on subdivisions. That's the gist of it.
So Director, if we choose not to adopt and continue with the opportunity for public comment and hold discussion, where does that place us as a town?
If we choose not to comply with state statute, we could have a series of problems, including and up to losing our state shared revenues. So I would advise strongly against that. I know this is an uncomfortable situation because on this item and on the next item, very similarly, it's going to reduce the powers of the commission as well, and, and the powers that I think are invested in the citizens of the community. So while I disagree with the methodology that the state proposed, I really have no option other than to advise, strongly advise, that we move forward with it. And I think that the perspective is that this will increase housing. Perhaps developers with lots of money were able to convince the state legislator that this was the root of the problem. I think that there's something else going on there, but specifically, I think that it probably has to do more with our short-term rental industry, consuming a lot of the housing, but there's a lot more money at stake for the state, so that's not how we're going to tackle the housing problem. We're going to tackle it through kind of bowing to, I can't even say it politically correct, bowing to the will of the developers, that's really what this is. And so, while I think the intent might be genuine, at least on the part of the state legislator, I don't believe that's the case from the standpoint of a developer. Because if I was a developer, I'd also want this to go forward, so I could make my subdivisions, make my money, and have a little, as little obstacles as possible from the, from the town, or the city, or whatever the case may be. However, if you have a good enough staff that can review these and make adequate recommendations and decipher if this meets the code or not, then I don't think it's as big as a problem as maybe, maybe it looks to appear on the surface. That being said, I have had a conversation with members of the community where I think that it's not without, it's not outside of statutory requirements that we could still meet with public, we just can't have a public hearing. So we can still meet with public and take, and take their concerns into the part of the equation, but the opportunity for public involvement via public hearing would be eliminated.
Director Lloyd, I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind. First, why now? This was, this was back in March. Did I read that right? It was back in March that the legislature passed, here it is December, why?
The last time I saw, I don't know exactly when, but the last time I saw, the reading said, "We may do this," and I felt that it was not necessarily a great idea, so I didn't bring it forward. The last, and then I had a conversation with town attorney and working with other communities in the White Mountains, saw this, actually, the language was struck from "may" to "shall." So we have to do it. Would I have liked to have done it and caught it sooner? Most certainly, but that's not the case. And there's a lot of municipalities that are kind of scrambling to get to the finish line now. And the fact of the matter is, is we're not going to get there by December 31st. If we look at the timeline it takes for everything, right, for it to go to council, it's not going to go until January, it's not going to be effective, probably till February, and that's best-case scenario. So, but outside, but outside of that, there's nothing in the queue. There's nobody waiting in the wings to develop a subdivision. There's nobody that's presented a site plan. So if those things come forward, it would be handled according to state statute and not according to town code and the interim, because this is actually a requirement on December 31st.
Got it, okay. Second question is, part of the language in the new statute, it's talking about objectivity.
Right.
About making those, you know, being human beings, I think we're also subject to subjectivity, right? So how do we look, moving forward on this? How would we ensure that that objectivity is maintained?
So, before I bring it, even in the current form, before I bring it to commission, before I take it to council, I already do that. I already do an objective analysis of what is presented, make sure that it meets town code. I think some of the development community thought that this was being subjectively dictated, and maybe in some cases it was. If, say, for instance, I didn't like the development personally, I might take issue or make extra requirements or present obstacles in the public hearing to it being approved. And so maybe that happened in some cases, and, and maybe the developers made a strong enough argument to lobby legislation to get the laws changed. That's just pure stipulation.
Okay. And then from, once it passes your desk, say you deny a, an application, what's the mechanism for the applicant after that? Is it, is it the county, or does it go in front of the council, or how does that work?
No, it would come back to me for approval. Again, at no point does it go to the council or commission. So the objective standards are already outlined in the code. So if it's something that you missed, say you don't have adequate ingress egress, then, I mean, that's clear, no, it's not going to happen. Or if you meet, if you don't meet any of the things clearly spelled out in our code, then the answer's no. So it removes the subjectivity of saying, a citizen coming forward and saying, "I don't like this because I don't want to have to look with it. I understand that there's a need for it, but I don't want it in my backyard." So it eliminates that component.
And then my final question, I'd like to, a lot of the people speak tonight. So, on historical sites, how does that, how does that come about? Who deems it historical? How is that decided?
Well, SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office, on a grand scale, declares these areas to be historic, of historic significance. You can be, you can make a request to get your building on there if it meets the requirements, but also, there is a caveat in that state statute that says the town council can make that determination as well. So if town council determines somewhere's historic, then it would go before commission and town council as well.
To get back on that question, does Pintop have, are we a certified local government with a Historic Preservation Commission right now, right?
We actually, I don't believe that we really have anything on SHPO's radar. Could be wrong, but I don't think that we do. We probably should, but we don't have a commission on that.
I think, prior experience, I think you have to have the council adopt a Historic Preservation Ordinance, and then you have to have a certified local government designation from the SHPO. You have to have a Historic Preservation Commission that can review any modifications or alterations to historic buildings. So those things have to be in place. So I don't think that's just really going to apply here unless the council and the community wants to try to follow that course and designate perhaps some buildings in the community historic. But I think that would have to be done first. Are there other questions?
No, I've, Eddie answered.
Christian's down here?
He's answered all my questions.
I just have a few comments. Jeremiah, I think, I think you've done an excellent job outlining this. This is a, kind of a, we'll get to the public comment here in a minute, Mr. Ingles. This is a, something that has been coming about by the state legislature, not just in this case, where they're taking away public participation in the planning process by not requiring developers to go through public hearings for these, these kinds of requests. But you know, there's been more and more of it. You know, some of the larger communities right now can't act on where apartments go. There's a lot of changes being made at the state legislature, so if you want to enact change, you almost have to go there and lobby through the state, but they are being more and more, I guess, accommodating to the development community. Now, on the other hand, I can tell you that there, by experience, there are some communities that can stall development plans so indefinitely, it's almost unfair. And so I think what they've done here is trying to expedite or make some more efficiencies in this development review process. You have excellent people on planning and zoning staff. We want to, and think the community is going to be best served by hiring certainly qualified people to review the code, to make sure the code provisions are all implemented in their review. And if they are, there should really be no reason for denial, as long as the codes are being satisfied. If the code's not good, this doesn't restrict the community from amending codes either. Code amendments still go to Planning Commission and Council, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So we're just talking subdivisions and site plans. Maybe you can answer quickly, planned unit developments, PUDs. If a developer wants to come in and subdivide within a planned unit development that has zoning already in place, that is an administrative approval as well, correct? Just by you, Director Lloyd?
Yes.
But if they come in and want to take a piece of property and propose different uses as part of that subdivision plat, they're going to have to go through a public hearing process, through Planning and Zoning Commission and Council, to get a planned unit development, which is a zone change, is that correct?
Right, so in no case would a zone change be precluded from a public hearing.
That's important for the community to know. Re-zonings, the ones that are oftentimes the most controversial, will still have public hearing processes. It's very important. The other question I had, you know, I've got several things here I want to hand to you that are just, some typos and a few things in here that I think probably you're going to work on with the attorney before it goes to council. I know that you were in kind of a time crunch, but I think there are a few things in here that need to be tweaked, just for clarity. One, one of the provisions in the ordinance talks about how the developer is strongly encouraged to meet with community members that are adjoining or adjacent to the subdivision or site plan that's being requested. Is there a way that we could change that in the code to require the developer to meet with the community members that are adjacent or adjoining the property? Since that wouldn't be a public hearing, that would be a neighborhood meeting. Can we require that rather than suggest it or strongly encourage it?
I think that that is a definite possibility.
That's one way we could continue to gain some community input if we made that change. It's not a public hearing, like you said.
Right.
But what it does is it at least informs those individuals that might be most impacted by a director or staff decision on a subdivision or a site plan. At least they would know what's coming in, they could at least see what's being proposed, they might even share some ideas and thoughts. Obviously, I've always found value in public comment, because there's many times, we're all public up here as well. We have some planning experience, but there's a lot of people in the community that know even more than we do, especially in their neighborhoods. So I would, I would think we'd want to change that provision in this ordinance to make that a requirement, if that's, if that's okay, Jeremiah. That's, that's one of my thoughts, anyway. That would be one of the, probably the biggest changes that I would see. With, with that, we may have some more conversation and discussion, but we'll turn it over unless there's other comments, commission members. Mr. Ingles, would you like to address the commission on item D two? Save your comments for D three when we get to the item, okay?
Thank you. Commission, staff, Robert Ingles, longtime resident, 1978, in Pintop Lakeside. First of all, I am uncomfortable thinking that we lost the local control. We are, as a community, we have a general plan, we have town codes, we have active citizens in the community, and we have looked to our Planning Commission to guide by recommendation to the council, and look at our town codes from the general plan down. There are a huge loss of the ability of the Planning Commission to influence the quality of development we get in the future. And I think those of us that have had decades of time in the White Mountains have seen some of the qualities of life that we like tending to deteriorate, and we're going to change, we're going to continue to grow. But I am concerned that code enforcement and code compliance are things that we've lapped with. And when I look, as a recent example, the Circle K store that got built, down with the remodeling of the Pintop Circle K, there was, there is a requirement in our zoning code that the front 20-foot front yard paralleling Highway 260 and C1 zoning should be a natural forested landscaping. We have a landscape code, too. And when I asked why all the trees were gone and we didn't have what was approved by the Planning Commission, I was told by the director that roots got damaged, they had to take the trees out, they wouldn't have survived anyway, and if I didn't like what was there, I should go talk to the landscape company that created the new plan. Never came back to the commission. And I looked at seven people up here when fully seated, and the diversity of the minds, the ability of you to know the codes, bring to meetings that individual knowledge and make your decision, and then that helps what we get in the way of future growth for our community, as being very important. I am here tonight on both these issues, kind of relieved that Chairman Miller has suggested that maybe this could be delayed a little bit, and the commission recommendation that would go to council will be able to have some changes in what's proposed in the draft that's this, that tonight. And I have hours of looking at this and multiple notes, but specifically on this agenda item, I would like to see the Planning Commission not go ahead and approve it yet, and even have some more input after tonight's meeting, and perhaps a early January meeting of the commission could work on a best recommendation to go to council. The language that's in there regarding strongly urge a developer hold a neighborhood meeting, and it's even mentioned in there, mailing out the surrounding property owners before the development comes. And the early action we can have as a community when a property is slated for development, right at the top of the flow chart, there's no, there's no mention of a Planning Commission, a, anybody that would be related to forestry and all. I believe the only person up there would be the administrative staff, which I think right now would be pretty much just Jeremiah. I think the many different opinions and the sharing of information, as Chairman Miller stated, with the people that have been in the community, the surrounding neighbors could make a big difference on the quality of development and the fit that it would have for our community, where roads or driveways might be located, the type of buffering. If we can impress upon potential developers a positive image, and go ahead, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Thank you, Mr. Ingles. You know, I wasn't suggesting that we table it tonight necessarily. I think that we're under kind of a mandate by the state to get something done here, to council for their adoption, before we have somebody come in and make a request. If that happens, then we have no rules, the state rules and state governance, that's the only problem that I see. You know, we can't, we've got to have a process in place. I was talking to another community mayor of a community that I previously worked in, they just had their council approve it last Monday night. So this is, a lot of communities are pushing real hard to get this done before the December 31st deadline. We're not going to, because we don't have a council meeting. What would be the impact of us delaying it for P&amp;Z, Jeremiah, if we?
I would like to have it move forward. I think it's already, like you said, we're already behind the eight ball here, and I think that the suggestion of requiring a neighborhood meeting, it addresses concerns of the public. I think that that's an easy fix that we can put in there to bring forward to the, in the recommendation to council. I think that that is actually probably one of the best ideas. The other idea would, is, you know, having, I think I still left it in here, was the requirement for the design review committee.
Correct.
And the design review committee could be anybody from the public. It could be people from the commission, it could be people from the council, it's just not a public hearing. So it would operate similarly, and maybe those two in tandem is enough to well some of the feelings of uneasiness understandably in the community.
Yeah, I understand the concerns, and I think a lot of communities are concerned about the exact thing that Mr. Ingles is expressing. You know, I think, I do think that the key here is going to be that, or the design review committee, or I think it's the development review committee, DRE. And I do believe we should probably look closely at who needs to be on that. We also need to ensure that we have some, some pretty, not subjective, but pretty detailed design standards, and I know you have them. I know that when you review these subdivisions and when you review these site plans, there's a whole recipe, you're looking at a whole list of guidelines that they have, the developers have to comply with under the current code. There's nothing that he's doing that's subjective, that's made up, otherwise we'd be challenged as a town if we're making up rules and that haven't been codified. So generally, what happens, if you've got a very experienced director overseeing this process, ensuring that they're on top of the codes, they know what the codes are, you know, you're going to get good projects. Because it's not a debate over whether a project should be in a particular location or not, zoning dictates that. We've had that conversation here before. The zoning dictates where the density goes, where the different land uses are, but when you get into this process of subdivisions and site plans, you're really looking at a checklist of our city code, making sure that the developer is complying with that. The chart in here isn't supposed to have planning commissioner council on it, that's what the state's mandating that we get away from. It's an administrative approval with the community development director and others who are going to be involved in the review process, the other entities. We have a water company, private water company, Arizona Water Company, we have Pine Top Water Company, we have the sanitary district, we have the fire districts, we have the forestry division, we have a number of other agencies that are going to be part of this review process to make sure that any developer coming in complies with all of their requirements before a final approval is given by the town. Even though that final approval wouldn't be from the commission or from the council, it would be from the town officials. So putting up any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. Can you come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something just popped into my mind as we were discussing this, and it seems as if the state has made rules and regulations brought on by probably big money from the developers, and they are forcing all the other towns to adopt what they see fit or what they have been, I won't, that they see fit. Is it possible for us as a town to change a number of our codes to give a little bit more control back to the townspeople, to the board? Would that be a possibility to do? And I don't have an answer to that, but it's a thought or an idea, if we can tighten up, add more to our codes, to be able to get that voice back in. And if that would be possible, I sure would like to see something like that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other people in the audience that would like to get up and address the commission at this time?
I have a question. So essentially, the town sets the codes, and then you will hold the developer to those standards of the codes. It's not your subjective opinion of what's going on, it's, we, the town has set the codes, and that's what's going to happen.
Precisely, so it's black and white. If you meet these requirements, then the answer is approval, and if you don't, then the answer is no.
So proactively, the commission can recommend codes and stuff like that, so that we can develop the stuff in the way we, that we'd like the town to go.
Yes.
I can answer that briefly. I think the commission can have future sessions to talk about code amendments and revisions. Those obviously have to be submitted to council for their approval, final approval, but yes, I think that there's an opportunity for us to engage the public on maybe code revisions that are necessary. A lot of this stuff that we talk about up here emanates from the city's general plan. You know, the general plan here is not very extensive. It's about how many pages, Jeremiah?
It used to be a lot more extensive, but one of the prior commissions that I believe Mr. Ingles sat on reduced it to something that, and I think that they did a great job, honestly. They made it concise for the layman to understand, and it was approved by the voters. And when they went out before that and did this extravagant general plan, it was too much information for people, and it actually did not get approved by the voters.
They're expensive to put a general plan together, but they are a guiding principle, they're a guiding document on how you, what vision you have for your community. The short summaries, it's important that they're understandable, that they're in layman's terms. You know, you get into the planning jargon and you read these zoning ordinances, people get confused. It's very, you know, it's a very confusing, very difficult process for us, even as planning commission members, and certainly the audience in these meetings, to understand the jargon sometimes. I'm sure as planning, as a community development director, some of this is not real black and white, some of it's gray. Some of the statutes are subject to some interpretation. So we have legal counsel that guides us and directs us on some of this, but I do think that we probably in the future should look at exactly what you're saying. Let's look at some of these, you know, as you, as you, as we maybe move forward as a community, and look at maybe updating a general plan or zoning codes. Let's look at what's not working, and let's, it's fit, you know, figure out how we can make those codes work for us, in spite of the developer not having to go through the commission or the council for the approval. They do have to go through and meet those codes. Again, like I said at the very beginning, the person seated in that chair over there, as well as the development review committee, are going to be critical to ensuring that we have the right type of development in this community, that's the type of development the committee would appreciate and would appreciate having in the area. Okay, any other thoughts from the audience, commission members? As you're considering a motion, and we'll be calling for that shortly for this item, I would like, you know, as I mentioned earlier, to put a caveat or put in there that we, that we require the developer of the subdivision to meet with the adjoining property owners, adjoining meaning adjoining or adjacent, exclusive of right-of-way, meaning that if you have a street separating the project from a development, they have to go across the street and notify those property owners or invite them to a neighborhood meeting as well. We have a distance requirement right now, don't we? Within a certain distance?
As far as notifications, it's 300 feet?
How much?
300 feet.
Maybe we can stick to that still, you know, rather than adjacent, maybe we should go 300 feet, keep it the same. Just, we won't call it a public hearing, it's a required neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood can't make the decision, unfortunately, and it'll be an opportunity for the staff and others to maybe attend that meeting and explain to the citizens how they're meeting the requirements of the code or how they're not, and help them through that conversation or that presentation. So maybe we'd stick with 300 feet rather than adjacent or adjoining.
I'd like for that requirement to be placed the burden upon the developer, though.
Yes, that, that, that would be the developer's requirement. It's not uncommon, I've done the private sector of practice as well, I've had to attend neighborhood meetings long before even planning commission meetings, and had to, minutes had to be taken at that meeting, the attendees that were present had to be documented, and all of that had to be presented back to the community development director as part of the application process.
We could get in the weeds regarding notice, too. Are we having every, every individual within 300 feet served with a processor, or they, you know, how it's noticed look like, right? So I mean, I think we could probably get in the weeds on that, but what is it typically?
Typically, it consists of me pulling that data from G.I.S. and buffering it 300 feet, and then giving those, those addresses that are from Abajo County, the same entity that disseminates our tax bills, that's where the information comes from, and then I give that to the clerk's office, and they do the mailings. What I'd like to see is that the developer does, takes that onus on them, yeah, they have to attest that they did that, I don't know that we need to get down in the weeds about how it's done, it just needs to be done.
So by mail, could we stipulate that it could?
That's how.
Mail, it's by mail.
Yeah, we mail it to the same address where whoever's on, listed on the county's records says the person paying their taxes.
Is there, is there a way to engineer some accountability regarding that?
Good question, and I think that we could have them attest to it, and if someone comes and says, hey, I'm within 300 feet and I wasn't notified, then we can say, well, you didn't meet the requirement. I mean, that's similar to what would happen if we didn't notify everybody within 300 feet, we'd have to redo that meeting.
Good question. I think the burden needs to be on the developer, not so much on the small staff that we have here to do that, for sure. Other thoughts?
I have one more question.
Yes, Amy.
Does that have to include a timeframe, like a notification, that you have X amount of months or weeks or days for those notifications to happen for that 300 feet?
There's a provision in the, we probably ought to have them, I mean, obviously, they're going to have to do that before they come to you with their, for any approvals.
As far as the timeframe specifically?
Like, do you have to occur before, it would definitely have to occur before the public meeting, whatever time that was. I mean, we could set a time, we could say, you know, within two weeks, you need to, two weeks advance notice, you need to notify everybody within 300 feet that you're considering proposing a subdivision within 300 feet.
For the benefit of the public, Director Lloyd, town doesn't currently have a town engineer, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what do we do about the town engineer reference in here?
There's reference scattered throughout the code, and I personally, in my opinion, being a licensed professional, so an engineer needs to stay there. But as far as why we don't have a town engineer, I think that there actually is a town engineer on contract. It's not me, it's not necessarily called the town engineer, but there's people that are on call, there's three different groups on call for engineering services.
Important for the community as well, these subdivision plats can, there's a lot of engineering technical, soils reports, geotechnical reports, flood control, a lot of engineering design goes into these reviews, and I think a town engineer on contract is going to be essential. In fact, I think as you look at this code, this proposed code, they have to sign off on the, on the final plat as the town's engineer, and they're an integral part of that development review team. And I believe the, whoever's making applications, when it comes to the landscape plans, they have to be a landscape architect registered, and an engineer of record. So these people that are submitting these projects obviously have the expertise to read the code, to understand it, and then to hopefully draft up something that complies. So you have that as an additional assurance that they're going to be complying with the code. In fact, it might even make them attest that they are in compliance with the code when they make that submittal. Maybe that's an option as well, so, okay. Any other questions or thoughts or comments? Jeremiah, anything else from you? You have a motion?
I do, I move to recommend the town code Title 16, subdivisions to comply with HB 2447 and allow for administrative reviews without a public hearing to the council, but stipulating that the applicant must provide notice of a community meeting regarding the project to addresses provided by the town, all residents or concerned parties within 300 feet of the applicant's project.
I might call it a neighborhood meeting rather than a community meeting, maybe more of a neighborhood meeting.
Neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, I think that maybe implies the immediate area rather than.
Timeframe of two weeks.
Two weeks, yep. Did I not say that? I wrote it down, I didn't say it, I guess, yeah, for two weeks, yep.
Okay. Now that we have a motion, we have a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
We have a second, all in the favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, I don't think this serves the best interest of the community.
I don't think that we necessarily disagree with that, but we're under a gun by the state. Talk to your legislatures, talk to your state representatives, that's where it's going to have to change, if you want to have more input.
Comply with the state.
Okay, that moves us on to item, we have the next here. This is a discussion and possible action regarding House Bill 2247 and amending the town code Title 17 related to site plan review. Director Lloyd, pretty much the same deja vu as the first case, so probably less conversation here, but.
Yeah, this one's a little more painful of an ask because it removes one of the powers of the commission, one of the two powers.
Questions of Director Lloyd? Member Ingles, you want to address this issue as well? Or Citizen Ingles?
Thank you, commissioners. Basically, I have very similar concerns. It's difficult with is the ramifications of the lack of public encouragement, actually discouragement by eliminating the public hearing and the noticing. And again, it was talked about historical sites. I would say the community has yet to identify a historical, excuse me, a historical site within the community that they felt they would go through the process. So it's like all this language in here is not relevant at this time to the community. And again, as we move ahead, trying to have codes that create a quality of life for present and future residents, it seems that not having the site plan review process, even noticing is cut back now, unless people happen to see an agenda item that is coming up and they know that's something near where they are and they have an interest in it, they're apt not to know there's even meetings going on. The, some of the different. The, some of the different things that I thought, found, I thought would be important, too, to discuss is, we in the past had a town forester. We have had the landscape code. We used to have a committee that was called the Open Space Committee. We had a general plan, I'm sorry, general plan, citizens committee. And so there were people within the residential non-business development sector, it was an open space committee that got, put, just abolished years back. I have sat in with a coffee with the council recently, Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, and led on the value of engaging citizens as our community grows. I feel that we need to move ahead. You as commissioners have taken on a responsibility to make recommendations to our council and deal with certain items that are the duties of being a planning commissioner. And I'm hopeful that we seem to have our arms twisted to just go ahead and take this on now, that maybe between tonight's action and what is actually presented to the council, that there will be some improvements in encouraging citizen engagement as the year goes on with this change in the House bill. And again, I am disappointed that it passed in March, and we're here on December 11th for the first time talking about this. The material that is in this, I think, is very important to the community, and we're missing an opportunity to look at it closer before the recommendation goes to the council. And with that, I'll step aside, and maybe some others, or you as commissioners would have opinions on this also. Thank you.
Any other member of the audience that would like to speak on this item? Commission members on this particular item?
I think we've pretty well discussed it, you two.
You know, I, again, I think, you know, kind of, you know, I think Jeremiah mentioned earlier, Director Lloyd mentioned earlier that, you know, the original language suggested that it was, the language was "may" rather than "shall." I think that, is that correct? Do you know when that changed, do you know when that changed to the "shall"?
Do not know when that changed. I only found out about, in working with other communities, having to go through the same thing. And then, then, then started the conversation with the town attorney. So like I said, initially when we saw this, it was a "may," and I thought, well, it's a "may," so we're not going to do that because I don't think it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay. We have a motion on this item?
I move to recommend amended, recommend amending the town code chapter 1784, site plan and plot review and approval to comply with HB 2447 and allow for administrative reviews without a public hearing to the town council.
Is there a second? I have a second to the motion. All right. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Motion passes three to two. This is not an easy thing, obviously. We, we don't delight in not having our opportunity to comment and have public input. But this is being forced upon us by the state. I've talked to an attorney as well. He talked to the town's attorney and former mayor that I was walking, working with wanted to not approve it. And the attorney said, don't approve it and see what the state does. And it was pretty much, he understood, we were under the police powers that are given to communities. Cities and towns and the state are granted by the state of Arizona. Our whole zoning authority is granted by the state under the zoning, zoning powers, police powers, public health, safety and welfare. So we're here to ensure that. So we're a political subdivision of the state under their rules and regulations. You don't like their rules and regulations, I would encourage you to call your representatives and explain to them your disappointment. My, my guess is that one day, maybe one of those representatives will be disappointed in the type of development that will go next to their home. That would be, be interesting to see how that works at that point. All right. Any other comments? I think that that wraps up our meeting for this evening. I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Motion to adjourn.